Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 10th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge Legions. All right, we'll move on to the roll call members. Madam Clerk, your role, please.
Sure. Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra J. Sinowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
He's excused, he was sick.
Okay. Sierra Messenger.
Present.
And Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to the -- we don't have minutes, correct? 11:25. So we have minutes from 11:25. Any changes or rest of those minutes?
Make the motion to approve the minutes on 11:25.
Motion approved, our second.
Second.
Second from Rob, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those are approved. All right, on to the old business. There's nothing on my agenda, anything from the council?
No, sir.
Okay. On to new business then. First item up here is a site status letter concerning 312 East Thompson Street. This is Derek Warren.
I'm gonna use the L mode tonight. Okay, so I know this is gonna blow your mind, but I'm gonna do it anyway. I'm here to ask for money. So, long story short is, this is 312 East Thompson Street. This is the old electrochemical site, the old tube forming site, the site that the Lebanon Parks Department just got ownership of, or I guess the city just received ownership of. It is -- the striped parking right here is Abner Longley Park. So, this is an eyesore in Abner Longley that I can tell you has been a thorn in my side. I looked it up on the history tonight, since 2012, back in it seems like a previous life at this point. In code enforcement, I was starting the pressure on this site to get it cleaned up. And here we are, a decade and a little bit later, we finally have ownership of it, and we are gonna clean it up. So, I'm here to ask for some funding to cross the Ts and dot the Is in terms of demolition. We're not quite ready for the demolition process yet, but we do need to update our Phase 1 test that we did in 2020, so that we can apply for the site status letter. And just to give you a brief history, Phase 1 was done in May of 2020. Phase 2 testing was done in June of 2020. And I've talked about this before, but Phase 1 and Phase 2 testing are environmental assessments of a site. Phase 1 is a very high-level assessment, just some paperwork and a quick walkthrough of the site. Phase 2 is actually drilling down, doing soil testing and air sampling testing, asbestos testing, lead-based paint testing, everything that goes along with more detail. So, Phase 1 and Phase 2 were done in 2020, and that was all done under the EPA Brownfields Grant that we had at the time. So, there's already been roughly about $45,000 spent on this site, courtesy of the federal government. So we're just here to kind of, as mentioned earlier, take it over the finish line. So, during the Phase 1 and Phase 2 testing, Phase 2 found there was an oil tank that was buried off the side of the site, and it was a fuel gas -- oil tank. So basically, a fuel tank that operated the, most likely, the furnace system on the site. That was actually removed as part of that Phase 2 testing. So again, that was all done under the EPA grant. So we've already spent a lot of money via the federal government on this site to have it a clean site. What we need to do is update the Phase 1, so that we can apply for the site status letter. And a site status letter essentially says the site is clean in very simple terms, and that the EPA nor IDEM will have any further action on this site. So as we move forward to the actual demolition of the buildings that we're not gonna use, this letter will give us and future office holders the comfort that the site is clean. We won't have to worry about it any further. So, the -- what I have up here on the map is essentially what we will be demolishing: three structures and some hallways that connect the sites. I'm not gonna bore you with all the details of when all this was added on, but the Parks Department on the northern site there, which is outside of the red box, is going to use that building. It is a -- it's a CMU block building that's in relatively good shape, very clean slab concrete floor. So we will keep that, we will demolish the rest of the site. So, the process to do that is gonna cost us roughly $3,900 for the Phase 1 update and the site status letter. I'm gonna ask for not to exceed $5,000, just in case there are project meetings and some additional filings that we need to do with IDEM. Once we have this in place, we will receive the letter that says it's all clean, which I don't anticipate any problems there. We already have the asbestos test document that we need for demolition, so we will plug that into the IDEM site once we get ready to demo this. But the first step is to complete the Phase 1 update and apply for this letter. So, $5,000 not to exceed is the request. I'm gonna make that request from, I suppose, Food and Beverage, I think is the best option to take that from, in the same vein that we did with 1313 South Beck Street.
Yeah, again, the thought is, this will be essentially help us expand our -- the park footprint, right? And using the Food and Beverage Fund helps us, obviously directly helps improve quality of life, quality of place in the community, which is why the Food and Beverage, and obviously we have money appropriated, it's just a matter of allocating it there. So, questions for Derek from the council?
Once we get this done, then we'll go out for -- get some quotes for demolition.
Correct.
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
Let me see if there's any more questions from council first. Any other questions from council?
No, sir.
All right, go ahead, Keith. We have a motion for $5,000 appropriation from the Food and Beverage Fund, not to exceed for the Phase 1 status letter of the 1312 -- or 312 East Thompson Street. Is there a second? Second from Dick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Keith, you're probably a pretty happy guy, right? We've been working on that one for a while, haven't we? All right.
Yeah. There we go. Thank you very much.
You know how diamonds are made. Diamond pressure, there we go. All right. All right, thank you, council. All right, next item up here is Resolution 2025-04. This is a personal property tax abatement concerning an expansion or new investment from GXO. And we have Jennifer -- Jessica Schwartz from the Boone Economic Development Corporation. Jessica.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. This evening, I'm presenting a four-year personal property tax abatement for GXO at 50%. To give you a little bit of background on GXO, they are a company here in Lebanon. They're a leading global provider of game-changing logistics solution to companies in every major industry. This project is in response to the potential to grow business with Nike for an automated fulfillment service of shoes and apparel. The company established operations here in Lebanon in 2017 and expanded operations in 2020, and they've been a valued business partner in the community ever since. So, the consideration is in process to, once again, grow business operations, but only for equipment, which would include adding 400-plus new jobs and making new machinery and equipment investments of $11 million. So the site is currently in an economic revitalization area in a TIF district. The new equipment is to include conveyors, racking, software, and computers related to automation. The majority of business incentives for the original project will be expiring in 2027, which was an original 10-year abatement. Currently, GXO employs over 2,200 full-time employees here in the county, and they plan to reach full headcount with this additional 400 by 2029. Let's see, what else can I give you? They are philanthropically involved in the community. They are involved in our Second Chance Employer Program as a second chance employer for those with a criminal background, and they participate in our mock interviews originally funded by our commissioners and in partnership with the court system and the probation office. They also participate in our Best Day in Boone Volunteer Day in the community. So with that, I ask for your consideration in the four-year personal property tax abatement at 50%.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
You know, as you highlighted, again, this is another deal that, obviously, we were working through negotiating with them. Again, still feel like this is a solid ROI from a city standpoint. Again, the potential 400 new jobs, the, you know, $11 million investment obviously isn't the biggest number we're seeing, but certainly it helps them keep -- expand their footprint here in Lebanon, which, going way back, right, this is actually the old Pearson Education Building, which for a long time, when Pearson shut down, it sat vacant, right? So getting GXO in that building was a boon for the city, frankly. Frankly, this thing turned out well, and actually, I think 2,200 employers would probably make them one of the largest, if not the largest, employer in Lebanon. So certainly, and I know Jessica highlights some of their local philanthropic efforts, but I know they also -- I've toured the facility a couple times, and have seen they actually have corporate-level philanthropic, that they do just themselves. This is directly with local organizations, but they do things in the community as well, help it support local Lebanon residents as well. So with that, with that, I'll have Rob read -- actually, let's just -- do you have any questions for Jessica this time? So we did a four-year 50%, so it's not a long-term one. It's, again, it was still a solid ROI from a city standpoint for us, well within our kind of negotiation range that we like to see. But yeah, it's not a sensitive personal property, which is generally deducted over time. That's why we just did a short-term 50% on that investment there.
Did you say there's 2,200 employees there now?
Yeah, 2,200 now, or they will be up to 2,200 with the 400?
2,200 now, an additional 400 by cheat sheet 2029.
Okay, I'll have Rob read the resolution then.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Resolution 2025-04, again, concerns a resolution of this council regarding certain personal property tax abatement deductions for GXO Logistics Supply Chain Incorporated. Pursuant to Indiana law, this council has the right and opportunity, again, to abate the payment of real property taxes for real estate as well as personal property taxes for an area to be located in an economic revitalization area. Pursuant to the Act, again, this council adopted Resolution 97-1 and Resolution 00-5 that had corporate boundaries consistent of approximately 49 acres describing Exhibit A, as well as the map in Exhibit B, that's all a part of the economic revitalization area. The council, after following all appropriate procedures, took final action on this and confirmed the declaratory resolutions and established this economic revitalization area. GXO Logistics Supply Chain Incorporated has filed with this council a statement of benefits of personal property, the SB 1 form that's attached is Exhibit E, which describes the proposed project, as Ms. Schwartz indicated. So therefore, this council has reviewed the statement of benefits, as well as the recitals in this, and finds as follows: The project will be located in the area which has been confirmed as an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana law. Based upon the information in the statement of benefits, this council makes the following findings: The estimated total of $11,720,000 as a cost of new logistical distribution and information technology equipment to be installed is reasonable for projects of this nature. The estimate of the hiring of 415 new individuals who will be employed can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed project. The estimate of $21,467,784 for the aggregate annual salaries of those individuals who will be employed can reasonably be expected to result from this proposed projects. The totality of benefits is sufficient to justify the granting of personal property tax abatement to the applicant through the deduction as provided by Indiana law. The statement of benefits submitted by the applicant is hereby approved. And again, the personal property tax deductions for this project are for four years, 50% for each of those four years, provided, again, however the designation may be terminated by this council in accordance with Indiana law. And this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. Any further comments, questions from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning Resolution 2025-04? Okay. Seeing none, we entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve Resolution 2025.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, councilors.
Okay, next item up, and probably why the crowd is here tonight, we have Resolution 2025-05. This is concerning the Lebanon Fire Station Build/Operate/Transfer Agreement, Installment and Participation Agreement. Kevin and Rob.
Thank you very much. I get the honor of presenting a project that I think we've all been talking about for a good seven-plus years, and I am just the last person in front of you. There's a long line of people that have worked really hard to make this happen. Couple people in the room, I just want to do -- I do want to recognize that are here, that are -- play much more critical roles than I do. One would be our legal advisory team, Rob, but also Catherine Finello with Dinsmore, helping us to put these agreements together. Annika Sinakin with Baker Tilly, very key on the financial side of things. Greg Martz, our proposed development partners in the back of the room. And then, of course, we wouldn't be here without Chief Batts and his leadership, as you see the support of his department, that truly do represent Lebanon's bravest. So, excited to present this before you tonight. I was here at your last meeting on February 24th, where we were putting forth recommendations and asking you to schedule a public hearing, which is why we're here tonight. And that recommendation, the basis of our award for the most susceptible to enter into a BOT agreement, was the team of Greg Martz, or GM Development, RQAW, and Core Construction. So that is the basis, along with the associated RFP, RFQ documents, for the procurement of Fire Station 13. And that's the reason we're before you tonight, is for the public hearing associated with this BOT agreement. So with that, unless there's any other details about the process, I would offer that any of the people that I introduced are probably also here and be happy to speak in favor of the project, or provide a lot more detail, more detail than I could really provide, if you would have any questions or concerns.
And just to clarify, Kevin, so obviously, we'll read the resolution, and we'll have discussion comments from everybody, and public comment as well, but, and of course, have the public hearing. But essentially, the adoption of Resolution 2025-05 essentially is the green flag to, like, let's start building this fire station going forward. Let's -- essentially, is the -- this is the approval of the process to start that.
Absolutely. We've made recommendation of award of the team based on the responders to the RFP, RFQ that was issued, and you've taken that recommendation under advisement and released the proper documentation for BOT agreements to be prepared and then set tonight as your public hearing. So yes, this really is, say, the final step before we're entering into BOT agreements to deliver a fire station.
Any questions on Kevin this time, or I'll have -- then I'll have Rob read the resolution? Okay.
Mayor, council, do you want to have Catherine Finello at least give an overview, or I can go ahead and read?
Well, I was gonna have her read it, then I was gonna call Catherine, if that's okay.
Okay, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Give the context first, and then...
Mayor, council, Resolution 2025-05 is a resolution of this council awarding a public-private agreement to construct, operate, and transfer a new fire station. So Indiana code authorizes the city to adopt certain powers with respect to consideration of entering into a public-private agreement, as defined in Indiana law. On February 22nd, 2021, this council adopted Resolution 2021-04, which was defined as the BOT resolution, which adopted certain provisions in the Indiana statutes and authorized the mayor to issue requests for proposals and qualifications to explore the development, construction, financing, operation, and/or transfer of projects that meet economic development, public safety, or other public purposes for consideration by this council. In accordance with Indiana law, the -- and the authorizations granted by the BOT resolution, this council, or the city, issued a certain request for proposals and qualifications, and that's defined as the RFPQ, seeking offers to design, develop, construct, operate, and transfer a new fire station in the city, that's defined as the project, under a public-private partnership by utilizing the BOT, or a BOT agreement. The RFPQ -- RFPQ committee reviewed and evaluated all of the responses to the RFPQ and determined the project team led by GM Development Companies LLC, which is defined as the developer, to be reasonably susceptible of being selected for a BOT agreement, and after completing a scoping period with the developer, has recommended that the council award a public-private agreement to the developer. On February 27th, 2025, the city published notice of a public hearing, which is for this date to have a public hearing and consider all public comments with respect to the recommendation of the RFPQ committee. This council desires to authorize and approve the project, award a public-private agreement to the developer in the form attached as Exhibit A, which is defined as the BOT agreement, authorize the execution of the BOT agreement, approve and authorize execution of an installment purchase agreement and participation agreement in the forms attached as Exhibit B to effectuate the city's acquisition of the project. The city intends to make the payments due under the transaction documents, as defined in this resolution, from legally available funds to the city. So therefore, this council finds pursuant to the Act, the council authorizes and approves the project, award of the BOT agreement to the developer, and the project in an amount not to exceed $9,500,000, which is defined as the authorized amount. And again, this will be paid from legally available funds of the city pursuant to, in accordance with the transaction documents. The council approves the form of the BOT agreement attached as Exhibit A, as well as the forms of the installment agreement and participation and purchase agreement attached as Exhibit B. The council authorizes and directs the mayor to negotiate, finalize, execute, and deliver the transaction documents on behalf of the city with such changes as the mayor upon the vice illegal counsel deems appropriate and consistent with this resolution. The mayor and clerk treasurer, again, authorize, directed in the name and on behalf of the city to take, where cause to be taken, all actions and execute any and other documents necessary to affect the foregoing resolutions and the transactions contemplated by the transaction documents, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage.
Thank you, Rob. This time, Catherine, if you want to kind of come forward and hit the financial highlights for us.
Good evening. All right, so I'll kind of run through a summary of each of the agreements, because you're probably wondering why all of these agreements. But, the BOT agreement allows for the development, design, and construction and delivery of the fire station project that will be entered into between the city and the developer, Greg Martz, who is leading the development team and construction team. Under that agreement, the city will agree to, along with the installment purchase agreement, pay payments to the developer to acquire the project. If you remember, we're going under the public-private partnership statute, and so this is a build/operate/transfer project. And so under the installment agreement, it is expected that the city will pay interest payments for a period of three to five years. I don't think those terms have quite been finalized. And then at the end of that interest-only period, you will pay the balloon payment to finish acquiring the project. The participation and purchase agreement is really where the bank comes in, because they're gonna purchase the rights to receive the interest and principal payment in connection with obtaining the bank loan. So those rights, Greg's rights, under the installment agreement and the BOT agreement to receive those interest and principal payments will be assigned to the bank. And so that's kind of the financing portion of the BOT. So the BOT not only lays out kind of the guaranteed maximum price of the project, there will also be transaction costs to close the financing, which includes Baker Tilly, legal fees, bank fees, and that pretty much rounds out, you know, the financing part of it.
Questions for Catherine at this time from the council?
Where are we getting the money from, from the bank? I guess, what bank are we going to?
Yeah, you want...
And that will be, and Annika can kind of speak to that, but they will be putting out, I believe, term sheets to several banks and seeking kind of the best, best offer from the banks.
Yeah, yeah, Annika, would you hold on? Yep. Don't go too fast, though, don't get to run, it's okay. You're eight months pregnant, you don't have to run, it's okay.
Hi, everyone. Annika Sinakin with Baker Tilly. Yes, as Catherine was mentioning, similar to the general obligation bonds that you've issued the last two years, we'll prepare a term sheet that will be sent out to local banks, talking with Greg and the city on what banks we want to send that term sheet to. So, we'll solicit bids from banks, go with the best interest rate of the city's decision to move forward with. So that's -- we don't have a bank yet, but whenever we do that, you'll select the bank to move forward with.
So essentially, but from an actual fund standpoint, obviously, we have general funds available to do this, right? But certainly, we could consider using our public state reserves that we have, you know, really, again, the resolution allows any legally allowable funds. You know, we've had discussions, obviously, since Station 13 is much has a greater proximity to the business park, you know, maybe there we could talk about redevelopment commission funds, but again, all of these things are frankly exactly how we line up all these streams. Really, we have time to figure that out, because those are -- those aren't due until payment, until actually the building is completed, as from understanding as well, too, right? So we have to build this for about a year or two. So, and then, of course, this is also with the LEAP revenues coming into the city. This will obviously help respond to certainly the Messin Foundry Lily project out on 32, so certainly using LEAP funds to help pay for some of this is certainly allowable as well, too. So, we're keep -- we're keeping it open, because we do have various revenue streams that are applicable and could be applied. It's just a matter of when we actually make the final decision to cut those checks of what -- whether it makes sense from those discussions we'll have with council and the clerk treasurer's office to determine where the best place to take that from is. So, it's a long way to say we haven't exactly said, but we have the money available to do it, if that makes sense.
Question that, the only question I have is, the money we're talking about tonight is just for the building? Or does that include all the inside the building?
The -- it includes this, this is a full, this will be fully operational, it's fully furnished by the time it's delivered, so it's a...
And that price is...
That's the, that's the all-in, turnkey-ready fire station. We roll our fire trucks in, we're up and running.
I just wanted to make clear that's what it was.
Yep. Yeah, and Greg Martz is in the back, too, if you have any questions about kind of delivery or things like that, if the council has questions about that.
Budget?
That's the police station.
Oh, okay.
That's the police station, yeah. This is, yeah, this is actually, you know, Kevin said seven years. I think I talked about this with Chief Batts in my transition, becoming mayor in 2015, so it's been longer for me. So, yeah, it's been a process. You know, this was included in our 2019 conference of plan update. So this has been a project we've been kind of working on for quite some time, and obviously, you know, the initial request out was for 2021, right? So we kind of, you know, interest rates kind of went crazy in that process. We kind of had paused for a little while, so we're kind of, again, they've kind of leveled and aren't really changing much, so we're kind of taking it back off the shelf. But frankly, the need of this has been here for a while, and so I'm glad we're kind of finally able to execute on it with that, so. Answer your question, Keith, again. Any other questions from council I can answer for you?
Nope.
Catherine, Annika?
The only thing I would say is you'll see some blanks and brackets in the agreement, but those terms and those blanks will be filled in once we know the final financing terms and once we get to the point of signing the agreement.
They won't substantively change, that's the framework, so. Okay. I think the only left to do then is the public hearing, then, correct? Okay, so this time then, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-05. If you need public comment, please come forward, station name for the record, or station name for the record, and please comment, it's two, three minutes if possible.
Sam Kornex, District Vice President, City of Lebanon, Boone County, Professional Firefighters Association, Local 5195. I've prepared a brief statement on behalf of the district membership in support of Station 13, of which I hope does not fall in deaf ears. Supporting public safety is essential for maintaining order, protecting lives, and ensuring the community's overall well-being. Population growth and urban expansion increase emergency service demands. Station 13 ensures adequate coverage for new neighborhoods, businesses, and infrastructure. As our community grows, so does every multifaceted job the city's firefighters face. Long gone are the days where the firefighter's role and duty are just extinguishing fires. The firefighter is a community servant. They are EMTs, paramedics, hazmat technicians, high-angle and low-angle experts. They are ICE rescue technicians, mental and emotional support specialists, and fire prevention educators. Building a new fire station is a significant financial investment, but it is essential for improving emergency response times as well as quality of care for the community it serves. Proactively investing in a new fire station will prevent costly future upgrades, reduce vehicle maintenance from excessive travel distances, and ensure the department is fully equipped for decades to come. Modern fire stations are designed with better facilities, equipment storage, and decontamination areas, improving working conditions and reducing health, reducing health risks for the firefighters. Lebanon is a unique situation where our elected officials have without hesitation been fully supportive of what the city needs in regards to public safety. At every turn, this council has given the city's firefighters every tool necessary to perform their job in the safest, most effective way possible, ensuring a safe community. As a union, and I do not shy away from that word, we fully acknowledge the financial responsibility the fire department takes in the city's budget and are grateful for the support. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when someone calls 911, your city firefighters are there to answer whatever the call may be. I am asking, will you answer the call and support for them and Station 13? Thank you for your time tonight.
Further public comment?
Steve Hayes. Good evening, council members. Mayor Gentry, appreciate the opportunity to share a few comments with you. I am not a resident of Lebanon. However, I am the president of the Boone County Professional Firefighters, Local 5195, and I get the pleasure to, to work alongside your city firefighters and enjoy fantastic relationships with your fire administration, as well as many of you and Mayor Gentry. I just wanted to share a few comments from some of my observations over the last few years with having the opportunity to work with, with most of these guys and some of you as well. I, I currently serve as a battalion chief at Zeinsville Fire Department, and for 18 years, I've had the, the great opportunity to be able to train and work alongside your city firefighters. And I can tell you, they're some of the best of the best that there are, and, and I don't say that lightly. That is just absolute truth. And I wanted to share as well that over my time involved with the firefighters' union, I also serve on the state board, the Professional Firefighters Union of Indiana, as a fifth district vice president, which just so happens to be our Boone County local, is, is one of those affiliates that I serve. But as I travel across the state and work with municipalities, fire administrators, you don't very often see an opportunity where you have a group of firefighters, a group of fire administration, council members, and a mayor that all have quality relationships and support each other the way that you all do. And so, I really just wanted to take the opportunity this night to not really talk about your new firehouse. I'm excited about the opportunity that you all are gonna have to have a new firehouse and to see the response of these guys improve as you continue to improve your fire department. But just wanted to take the opportunity to commend you all for the work that you do and for the way that you support your firefighters and their staff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Seeing no sudden movements. I'll close the public hearing then on Resolution 2025-05. Any further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, we entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 2025-05.
Motion approved, Resolution 2025-05. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob, third from Sierra. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That is approved. Thank you, council, and thank you, Chief Batts, the entire fire department. Obviously, you guys do a phenomenal job for our community, and, you know, frankly, I think this has been something, like I said, we've been working on for quite some time. You know, I think this will be a great service to especially our residents in the western side of the community that will have significantly better response times to serve them. I think it's a huge step for our community, something that we know we've needed for a long time. Appreciate the partnership and honestly, the patience as we work through this process to, to create this new facility for you guys that'll be Class A for a long time to come. So, with that, thank you, council, and thank you, fire department. That concludes what I have for new business. Anything from the council?
No.
Okay, move on to the claims then. We entertain a motion concerning the claims. Motion and a second, pay the claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, any announcements or discussion?
Yes, I want to make an announcement that the Lebanon's Qualus Club Annual Pancake Supper, 71st year, is coming up April the 10th, and there is a rumor, which I just started, that if you buy an advanced ticket, the pancakes taste better that night.
Fair enough. All right, so we got one more meeting for you to plug that, and we'll go from there. Any other announcements or discussion from council?
Yes.
Yeah.
Instead of asking when the stoplight and the stop signs are going in, I just wanted to make a mention, they're in.
Yep.
Over on Camp and Lafayette Avenue, which is so needed. I'm so happy that they're there now, and I know the whole neighborhood is.
Yep, I'll pass along your appreciation to Jason, he was here earlier, but yep, I'll pass it on to him. Yep. Yeah, sorry, the, we finally got those parts in and got them up, so we're good to go. All right. With that, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn.
Motion adjourned, and a second for Keith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, March 24th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned.